All right, today is Wednesday, June 16th. We are going to continue our council budget briefings, starting at 1:30, and I will invite Deputy Chief of Staff John Carlson up.
Very nice, Mr. Chair, council members. Thanks again for hosting and for having these afternoon sessions, so we have a chance to talk a little bit more about the budget development. We're back for our second day of discussions, and we'll meet again next week on Tuesday from 12:30 to 3:45 PM for our third session. And again, just to remind those folks at home that it's kind of part of the multi-month budget process. Mayor's put out her draft budget, and now we're having more detailed discussions, and the council will be putting together their thoughts, and we'll be taking community feedback over the next couple of months, all of which culminates in actual budget hearings on Monday, August 2nd that start at 3:00 PM. So just to kind of give a framework for those watching at home about how we're working to craft investments to make their community better. So first up today, I'm going to introduce Pat Leach from Lincoln City Libraries to talk about what she and her team do.
Yay. Hello, everybody. I am Pat Leach, the Director of Lincoln City Libraries, and I'm pretty excited to be kicking off your afternoon of budget briefings today. So I appreciate your time and attention, and I will say that John Carlson has made pretty clear that we're to try to find the intersection between brevity and full information. So that's my charge today, which is good because I could talk about libraries for a long time. So just to set the context, this slide shows the five areas of focus in the mayor's budget as far as moving forward with our city. And while the library touches all of these, we are especially connected to vibrant city economy and quality of life and equitable and inclusive city. A little bit here about our mission. Our three key words here are learning, literature, and literacy. So we're all about those things and done in community through the public library. And I just want to note from the start what a relief it is this year that we're not talking about the need for heavy budget cuts and reductions in library staff. So a phrase that you'll see often in this presentation is "library staff and services are fully funded," and I love that phrase, and I'm glad we'll be seeing it a few times today. I want to introduce a couple of people who came with me today. Tracy Glass is our Assistant Library Director. She's been on the job since September. She has a lot of library experience in Oregon, in Eugene, and Portland. And Paul Jones is our Business Manager and works closely with our budget each year, so Paul has joined me as well. One of the most important things on the list that you see here is the part that is interactions between people. And I wanted, just to give you a quick example of how that sounds to us when we think about library services, we have some interns this summer. I spoke yesterday to an intern at Isley Library. She'll be a senior at Lincoln High. It's funded through the Nebraska Library Commission. And I like to ask our interns, has anything surprised you about your time at the library? Anything sort of unexpected? And she said, "Well, I thought it would be about books and reading. What I found out is that it's really more about people." And frankly, I just sort of wanted to give her a hug and say our work here is done because that is what we want people to understand about libraries, is that we absolutely rely on great collections of materials, on good Wi-Fi, on strong technology, but the real difference maker for the library is our staff and the difference that that makes. So if you have a question about how to scan an item and attach it to an email, if you've never emailed, if you need an idea for a good book, or if it's your first time ever visiting a public library, it's the staff that make that difference. During the pandemic, our library found out how important reading is to the community. So we were able to continue providing those services, and we learned from our customers just how important it is to them. We're also among the few providers of both computers and internet access free of charge in Lincoln. And an interesting note about that, we know that a lot of our low-income people make use of that service, but we also have a lot of people who print things at the library. And that's because a lot of people just have a hard time keeping their printers inked and functioning at home, and so that's another use of computers that we see quite a bit of. One of the additions to our budget this year relates to being community leaders and promoting the importance of reading aloud to young children, in that we added a part-time librarian whose job it is to be what we call the "read aloud advocate." She does a lot of outreach in the community, a lot of social media to promote the importance of reading aloud to children, which I will just mention again, as I have many times before, is one of the most important things, one of the most critical things that anyone can do to prepare a child for success in school. And by using your public library, it doesn't have to cost a thing. Then another thing mentioned on this slide is growing a future with opportunity and equity for all residents, ensuring book collections that reflect a variety of experiences, and especially after the George Floyd murder last year and everything that happened, we took a long, hard look at our collections and continue to, to make sure that we're representing well our whole community. Now, this slide shows what our last year has been like in terms of loans and visits. And you'll see that in fiscal year 1920, we had a significant dip. So libraries were closed to the public for two months last year, and we provided pickup-only service. And right now, we're back to very nearly full service. We are doing children's programming outside instead of inside right now because they're not vaccinated yet, and we're monitoring our Summer Reading Challenge registration numbers, which are coming back, not quite to pre-pandemic levels, but our goal is to get there eventually. A little bit about the services we provided during the pandemic. Even when we were closed to the public, we had front door pickup service. We provided returns, and we quarantined materials. When they first came back, we no longer do that. We provide book bundles for people who maybe just want to call and say, "I have a three-year-old who likes dinosaurs, trucks, and Clifford the Big Red Dog," and we'd have a bundle ready for them to go. A lot of virtual programming. I know you heard me talk last year about the increase in use of downloadable books, whether eBooks or audiobooks. And then we did institute some senior services, including technology tutoring, where people could book a time with an individual to provide one-on-one service. Again, I just note that during the pandemic, we found out how much people value reading, whether that's the comfort of reading in a stressful time, or whether that was a book that can take you far away when you're stuck at home. So kind of going from a few different directions there in terms of reading. Then this slide shows our organizational structure. So one thing that's different about the library compared to other departments is that you'll see the Library Board up at the top of this chart, and I want to recognize that seven-member board that does have responsibility for policy, budget, facilities, and also just note that they are some very hard-working volunteers for our city. A couple of things on this chart also that I want to point out is the Heritage Room. The longer name for that is the Jane Pope Gaski Heritage Room of Nebraska Authors in Bennett Martin Library, is a privately funded service through a fund held by the foundation for Lincoln City Libraries. And then the Poly Music Service is also funded through a private endowment that provides for a staff person to give that service to our customers. The next slide is expenditures and funding sources, a little bit about what ours look like. I will just point out, in terms of the funding sources, that the yellowish-goldish piece there is a county library tax. So Lincoln City Libraries is a city department, but we provide services to people outside of the city within the county through an inter-local agreement with the county, and then they do pay a portion of our budget for that service. Then another key fund for us is Keno funding, and that is directed primarily to our book and downloadable materials collections and to library technology. And sometimes those also, the Keno funds also go to some capital-related projects. Then under expenditures, you see there are major expenditure. Expenditure is personnel, so that's 68% of our budget. So as I mentioned before, it's hard on library staff when we have a tough budget year and are thinking about staff cuts, because it is that 68% of the budget that tends to take the cut. And people worry, you know, when that happens. They worry for their own families, they worry for their colleagues. It's not unusual for us to lose some quality library staff for whom the uncertainty is simply not acceptable. So it's a real relief this year not to have those cuts. I also want to note on the expenditure side, capital outlay is where you see our purchases of library materials for people to use. So books, downloadables, et cetera, come from that side of the budget. This chart shows our full-time equivalents, how many the library has. So you can see that we did lose a half of a full-time equivalent position between 1920 and 2021. We lost a position, a full position, in our virtual services area, but we did gain that half position as our read aloud advocate. So right now, our total is 107.04. Then I was also invited to talk with you about our performance standards. So for the library, we look at things such as the participation in reading programs, and we strive for 20% of people in the summer reading program. And last year, our total was 6.6% during the pandemic year, and we are probably not quite going to reach our aspirational goal of 20%, but we are seeing a healthy increase this year. Then another one of our goals is maintaining a per capita checkout rate. That number also took a hit during 1920, and we hope to reestablish it to 9.8 items per person going forward. Then another aspect of our work is meeting room use, and that, again, is something that suffered while we were in the midst of a pandemic, but we expect that to recover as we go forward. So a few things about what happens within the libraries. This is maybe the first slide with the phrase "library staff and services are fully funded." These pictures show, actually, this particular picture shows one of our library superstars, Ms. Susan on the left, who is at Isley Library. She's recognized almost everywhere she goes. She knows people's names. She visits thousands of students in schools. She's probably one of the hardest-working women in the city, frankly. And I mentioned her to emphasize, again, the point that our libraries are providing services and support for neighborhoods, and that comes through people like Ms. Susan at Isley. Again, library staff and services are fully funded. One of the things that we have been emphasizing are reading and discussion of timely national issues. So we did a program earlier this year promoting that. We are also hoping to reinstate a collaboration we do with Humanities Nebraska called Primetime Reading Time, where parents and elementary-age children together experience picture books and then are led in some humanities-themed activities. So that will be coming up again soon. Then within our capital improvements program projects, the Lead Book Mobile is our current Book Mobile. It provides services to a pretty diverse population throughout the city and county. We will be replacing that in the fiscal year ahead, and I may have mentioned some of this to some of you previously. We are moving toward more of a service model where we're probably not purchasing as big of a vehicle. We want a vehicle that's a little bit more nimble, more able to get in and out of residential areas, more able to back in or back out of a place. But it will be doing things such as deposit collections of materials at places or pop-up libraries, and we'll also allow people to get on the vehicle. But the Book Mobile is probably our most visible service to small towns outside of Lincoln but within the county. We're also doing a lot of outreach in the county during the summer, providing children's programs there. Another aspect of this investment in the library is that we continue to expand our collections, meeting the needs of the entire community. So this takes ongoing work as new books are published each year, and as we seek to be sure that our collection doesn't have gaps within it, we pay a lot of attention to what our customers ask us to purchase. We pay a lot of attention to book lists that come out, and that helps us to ensure that the items that we have are the things that people are hearing about and are ready to go. One of the things about library collections is that many of our books get most of their use during the first year that we own them. So when a bestseller comes out, we may need to get multiple copies of that to meet that early demand and to get people into the library, but they may not retain their popularity forever. So we're always then having to replace them with other new things that bring people into the library. And we pay a lot of attention to overall use patterns as we purchase materials to buy. And then there's the ongoing work that we have in terms of downloadable materials. I don't know how many of you use our downloadable materials. We have two different companies we work with. One is called Overdrive. They have an app called Libby that allows a person to download eBooks or audiobooks to their device. That's a very popular service. Through Libby, we purchase one copy at a time of materials, which basically means one library customer at a time can access what we purchase. If we want more people to be able to access, then we have to essentially buy more copies, and that's how Libby works. We also work with a company called Hoopla. They have a different service model. We pay them, okay, it looks like Councilperson Washington is familiar with Hoopla, we pay them on a different kind of model. With Hoopla, we have access to everything that they offer, and then we pay for each use of that. It's a smaller fee per use, but it is a per-use fee. It's a very popular service, so we've had to limit the number of uses a library customer has each month in order to manage our budget. So those are the two service models we currently have with our downloadable materials. One thing I would note is, last year, we saw a huge increase in use of downloadable eBooks, the ones that you read off of a device, and that is calming down somewhat, that some of that use is decreasing now. But we are monitoring that. There are plenty of people who used to visit a library on a regular basis, who have become accustomed to downloading, who maybe won't be using a library facility as much anymore, but we're kind of watching how that works so that we can be responding well to any changes in library use. Here again, I want to note, "library staff and services are fully funded," and in this case, we're looking at a library meeting room. We're pleased that we're offering our meeting rooms for use again. During the pandemic, they weren't open, but it was, in some ways, a boon to us that they weren't, because we quarantined materials for 72 hours when they were returned, and so library meeting rooms ended up being the place where those materials went and then were processed. But I do want to emphasize that library meeting rooms are a very popular service, and almost always, when I talk to librarians in other cities with new facilities, and I say, "What was surprisingly successful in your new place?" They will say "meeting rooms." And some of those are what you are familiar with in our libraries, maybe a room for 100 people that you can divide. More and more libraries are including, say, two- or three- or four-person conference rooms, conference rooms for 12 or 15 people, with good meeting room technology to allow for Zoom and to allow for other virtual ways of connecting with people elsewhere. So people are also incorporating that sort of use. Then I wanted to take a moment to highlight, again, the read aloud Lincoln position that we have, our Read Aloud Advocate. She supports a social media presence on this topic. She collaborates with a lot of different organizations in town doing this work, and she attends a lot of community events as part of the library's outreach. Then we do also continue to offer library learning times, which you probably would call storytimes. Those are an opportunity to do some pretty serious work, even though it looks like fun, building a love for books, understanding how books work, understanding how reading works, expanding vocabulary, doing that sort of activity in support of reading. So that is certainly something that we place a lot of emphasis on in terms of our services. So that concludes the formal part of my presentation. I just want to conclude again by saying, learning, literature, literacy, lifelong education done in community, that's really what the public library is all about. We are very excited to be looking ahead, given this year's budget, and I will leave it there and ask you what questions you have.
And knowing that directors are available to us if we have longer questions, are there any quick questions that the council has? Councilman Chobe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Leach, you said something about being funded. What was that phrase you used again?
Oh, I believe the phrase was, "library services and staff are fully funded."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Councilman McGinnis?
Just real quick, you showed debt service. What is the debt for, and what is it, and how long?
I may turn to our Business Manager, Paul Jones. So we did a large energy savings project a couple of years ago where we upgraded our energy, our HVAC. We went into debt in order to do that, so that's the debt service on those projects. And I will emphasize that the efficiencies that those created have been substantial. Thanks for asking.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck today.
Thanks so much. Next up, I will invite Director Marvin with Urban Development.
Thank you. Dan Marvin, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm with the Urban Development Department. So, wow, it's Lincoln Libraries. There we go. Urban Development. I want to start with our mission statement. I think it's a good mission statement. It kind of encapsulates what we do, so if you just, I'll read through this. "Urban Development promotes neighborhood vitality through affordable housing initiatives, redevelopment programs, and efforts to enhance social and community capital through reinvigoration of community spaces. These efforts are supported through housing programs, neighborhood revitalization, redevelopment in blighted and substandard areas, and improvements to public spaces such as streetscape projects. Urban Development also manages garages, surface lots, on-street parking. Other parking-related services include downtown parking enforcement and parking citation management. Through these operations, we help maintain a vibrant downtown environment and expand economic opportunities." So thank you for letting me be here with you today. Our organizational structure hasn't changed from last year. We have the Director, and then the Assistant Director is Dallas. Our livable neighborhoods is with Wynn. Administration divisions are headed by Pat. And economic opportunities include parking operations, which is headed by Wayne McStorff. Our staff positions in total are 20.5. The .5 we added about a year ago, or two years ago, and it's a part-time position from the University Law Department who helps with the citation management. But the total number of positions, 20.5, the total number of general-funded positions is 9.3. So we're a small department from a general fund perspective. Livable neighborhoods, these would be CDPG and home funds, and I'll get to that in a little bit later, but this is the budget look at intergovernmental numbers. These would be federal dollars that come here, and then charges for services. These are loan dollars that come back. I think many of you know that our loan programs are extremely favorable. There's 0% with no payments on most of the loans that we have. We have an outstanding loan balance of about $22 million. So when somebody moves out of their home, there's a lien against that property, and we recover those funds back. So those would be charges for services. Those are the dollars that come back from there. Some of the things that we do, we'll do streetscape work and census tracts that warrant our expenditure of those funds. We did the Spray Park over in Trago Park. And our home funds, similar arrangement, intergovernmental, these are federal home dollars that come to us, either home or ESG dollars, and then charges for services, again, would be the repayment of loans that have been encumbered through our operations. An example of housing rehab, sometimes we'll acquire a property. This was a property that you all, we sold, and then the land sale was done through city council. So then two slides would be, that house that we had on the left would have been the kitchen that we started with, and on the right was the kitchen that we rehabbed too. And then the basement on the left, and then pictures of the basement on the right. This house was sold to somebody who was making 80% area meeting income. Economic opportunities, these would be general fund dollars. These basically finance the people that are working on the administrative side or working on some of the redevelopment projects that we work on. Examples of some of the redevelopment projects that we've taken through here, it won't bore you with a lot of slides, it's a lot of different projects, but this is the Innovation Campus Hotel. The picture on the left is the original design that we would have taken to city council, and that project, it's not going to be yellow at the back end, but right now, under construction, it was the installations and the construction of that building is ongoing, and I think it's going to open perhaps later this year. Cotner and P is a project that we took through. Again, on the left is artist kind of schematic drawings, and on the right, that apartment project is expected to open later this year as well. Again, down on Block 4, which is on the corner of Cotner and, no, on Canopy and In Street, on the left is the schematic drawing, and on the right, you can see the building coming up out, and 2023 is an open date for that particular apartment. We just had, Randy Jones was just through with the project that's out on the VA campus. Urban Development was involved with the TIF project for this particular building's open. We're going to provide a lot of different services for veterans. And as a side note, they did apply, and I think they're ahead of schedule, but they got 9% tax credits to do the rehab in the old hospital that will provide veteran services, including housing for veterans. Parking operations, I think we've discussed parking operations, the impact under COVID. You can kind of see this here, our budgeted numbers for '21, '22, and '21, you know, show a difference from the actual numbers that we would have earned in '19 and '20. And the first slider, what would be parking garages. The next slide would be parking lots and JPA facilities. Basically, it's a pass-through operation on the JPA side. We bill out for costs related to administering the services, staffing, and repair and replacement for the JPA garages. Parking upgrades. Eagle Garage is open, I'm told? I think we're open?
We have a few more things that we're working on, but yes.
But we're expecting that to be open very soon. We shared this slide earlier in a chamber event. I think, you know, it's rare that your schematic drawing and your actual building look so similar, and it's really, you know, as a matter of fact, the actual looks a little better because it's got some green in front from across the street, but this one, the picture looks quite different from the schematic drawing because we're not up and out of the ground yet. But I'm told that they're bringing the precast to the site, so we should be seeing a building that'll be open in '22. And I would invite- And I would invite any of you to contact Wayne and come over and see the Operations Center. It's really an impressive facility. Wayne had a wonderful vision there. I think not only is it saves us money in terms of parking operations, but it improves customer experiences because if you have any kind of problems, that center screen that you can see in this particular view, they can pull up any particular garage and they can go right to that customer and visit with them and address concerns that they might have, or their credit card isn't working quite properly, or lost their ticket. You know, they've got the ability to monitor that and then also monitor to make sure that there's safety occurring in all of the parking garages. You should schedule a tour, I think that they would. Administration is the linkage between all the different departments. And we do a lot of different things through the administration side. That's real estate sales. All the property sales is headed by Michelle in our department. Kurt does some of the research, the background research on a variety of different areas. We administer all the federal planning and administration and filings for all the federal reporting, financial reporting. TIF administration, we have to monitor each one of the TIF notes that you all approve in your process. There's a monitoring of the repayment of all of those different notes, environmental assessments, and BID management. On the BID level, these are just the BIDs, whether it's a management or a core system, all of the different BIDs. There may be a potential to, and some of you might have been communicated on South 48th Street, there's a need for more parking on South 48th. Maybe one of the tools for that would be to expand the BID in that area, create a larger area, and then there might be dollars to administer parking operations for South 48th. We have an expanding BID for DLA too, which I know many of you have been briefed on that as well. Here's an example of a property sale that was significant. We sold a property at 27th and Old Cheney. All property sales need to be approved by councils. We took that through. And then what you'll see on the left is pictures of the construction site and the building out of that medical facility on the corner of 27th and Old Cheney. Impacts, we've seen decreases in our parking operations. The positives, we've seen a number of residential projects be undertaken in the downtown area, and that's a continuation of something that's been happening for years. National Research Corporation has done an expansion of their property, which is going to create additional parking needs for the City of Lincoln. And transient parking, which these would be one-hour parking purchases, that we're getting close to a recovery in transient parking. The Urban Development has, because of COVID, we have a number of new funding streams, but let's start with the one on the left, the federal allocations. So going back to the slide that discusses CDBG and home, bear with me. So the home funds, you'll see a line item of $1,006,000 and $1,005,000 for the '21, ' '22. And then for CDBG, you see a number of $2,587,000. What we have are a variety of different lines that we can use those funds for, which is on your agenda for next week, where we will be talking about both home and CDBG funds. So within the $2,587,000 are a variety of different uses for those funds, community crops being a small number, but that would be an example of one of the line items within that. Home funds at $1,004,000, the largest line item there, I think it's like $907,000 for our first-time homebuyer program that's administered through Neighbor Works. ESG is emergency solution grants. These are homeless funds that we share through a variety of different providers to help address homelessness. The COVID dollars that we have are a variety of different streams. The biggest one is the U.S. Treasury ERA-1 at 13.4. Those are the dollars that we're working off of now. The dollars that are above there, the 2.3, the 5.57, and the others, these were funds that we had primarily in 2020. We didn't get the U.S. Treasury funds until the end of January. We almost exhausted all of the other funds up until about January, and then we received the infusion of 13.4. Last week, we paid out about a half a million dollars in rental assistance, and we continue to keep doing that. There's some grants that we've applied for. The grants, and they've both been approved, the grant, the lead-based paint grant of $3.4 million. We've been trying to stand up a program for lead paint remediation out of a number of homes. There's some certification efforts that we need to do. We need to stand up developers and contractors who can deliver on those kinds of services, the remediation side of it. So those efforts are underway. And the EPA grant we were awarded a couple of weeks ago, which will be used primarily in Haymarket South, but also has an opportunity to do some remediation on joint public agency property land that is on the west side of the tracks, north of O Street, and there may be an opportunity to turn that into agri, land that we can farm or contract out for farmers to be able to use. When we look at the people who are being served by Rent Utilities, who are these people? Well, there are a lot of people that live in Lincoln, and we have to take income information off of those individuals. And the vast majority of those people are making under 30% area median income. We can't provide the dollars to people over 80% area median income, so you can see that 89% of the people applying for the assistance are people who are making 30% area median income or less. Some of the goals that we have is to continue to use TIF to help address blight and substandard areas, to help unemployment, provide places for people to live, work. And parking operations for this current year will be to open Eagle Garage and then finish construction on the Block 4 garage, which is estimated to open on May of 2022. Livable Neighborhoods, that's the other division headed by Wynn. That would be to implement the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan, implement the Lead Hazardous Control Program that we just spoke about, and continue the Rent Utility Assistance that we're providing citizens of Lincoln. Administration, we've got goals to try to digitize more. Less paper is better. To administer CDBG, home, ESG, and the COVID funds, so there's a tremendous amount of tracking. The, there are reports that need to be done on Rent Utilities, so those are submitted to the federal government. Track affordable housing goals and support Urban Ag as well. Again, that's our mission, and I'll open it up for some questions.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin at this time? Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. I'm curious, Director Marvin, maybe it's a question for Wayne. Are there any real people left at our parking garages? Are they all automated? I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I just was curious.
We have real people at parking.
I know you do at the center or the staffing, but when you go in and out, is it all automated?
I think Wayne's probably the better one to answer the question, but, I mean, it's to try to assess parking demand and have people there at times when we think demand is great.
Wayne Mixdorf, parking manager. Yes, we have people in the garages. What we have eliminated is the cashiering positions.
That's what I should have asked, yes.
All of the cashiers were offered other positions within the organization when their jobs were altered, when they were eliminated, and several took advantage of that, most did not. What we do have now, we've created ambassador positions that are working in the garages, but also handling additional duties besides what would have been the cashiering. All of the payment functions in all of our garages are now automated, and it is credit card only in all of the garages. And that seems to work quite well.
I wondered. I'm zipping in and out quite often downtown, and I should have clarified and asked about cashier positions. All of this information that Director Marvin gives us, and I ask about parking people, but it's curious, I know. I'm interested. My second question while you're up here, if you don't mind, is can you anticipate how long it will be till we catch up from COVID, from the parking deficits that we experienced? I know that's difficult to say.
Well, it is future forecasting, which is always difficult for everyone. What we're seeing is a steady increase on a monthly basis in transient parking. That would be our hourly parking in the garages. It would be the on-street parking as well. That is now probably at about 80% of pre-COVID numbers, and it does increase on a monthly basis. We haven't seen any decreases since actually the beginning of the year. It's been a steady increase. What we're not seeing yet is a return of downtown workers. While the increases there are still steady, they're much smaller, and we are only at about 50% of our pre-COVID numbers for monthly parking. And that represents a significant portion of our revenue streams. But everything else seems to be returning to normal. Special events, as you've probably seen recently, football games, concerts, that sort of thing, those are definitely anticipated to return to normal here, starting with the Garth Brooks concert in the middle of August. So from that point forward, our special event numbers should return to normal. That also represents about 10% of our total revenue stream. So we're hoping that that's going to actually exceed our pre-COVID numbers.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Director Marvin.
Councilman McGinnis?
Go ahead. Let me go ahead. Thank you, Councilperson Washington, for you being the floor. Real quick, could we get some numbers on the parking garage at some point with the debt service in future, how you're, and the payments and how they income? Is there a separate accounting for all the parking, since that's a separate enterprise fund?
There is. Is there a specific number that you're looking at, a total or an annual?
Look at the total.
Sure. We can get that for you.
Okay. No. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Director Marvin, this might be, it might be impossible to answer, but I'm really curious by the numbers that you were talking about with rent assistance, and you were saying we're really reaching people at 30% area median income. So what's happening at the 40% and 50% and 60% area median income? I mean, since we can provide rent assistance to folks up to 80%.
Right.
What's happening? What do you think is happening?
Well, I mean, it's a double-edged sword. When we encourage people, we get a huge influx, but I think that, I think it's representative of where the need is, because we're not, we're not, there is a way that if we were running out of funds, we could prioritize to a particular, but we don't prioritize. Whoever applies that is qualified is allowed. So I think that that graph tells you where the need is, and the need is with people who are, you know, struggling. And the other thing is, it may be somewhat deceptive in that people who applied, applied at a time when they were unemployed, so they're going to fall into that category that would be the below 30% area median income. Now that, now as people start coming back into employment, they're not needing rent assistance because they've come back to unemployment roles, and they're, they may be more at the 60%, 70% area median income.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing that, thank you so much, Director Marvin.
Thank you.
Up next, I believe we'll have City Attorney Christie to give us a budget briefing about law and human rights.
I'm definitely going to schedule to see their performance.
And the Passport App. I don't know if you guys are using that or not.
I love it.
Better than Ezra.
Good afternoon. It's my honor and privilege to stand in front of you and talk about the Law Department and the Human Rights Commission as well. I think in a lot of ways, this is somewhat easy presentation for you. Maybe easy is not the best word, but we're asking to maintain existing resources. We do not have, you know, CIP projects or anything like that, as you are aware of. So just starting with our mission statement, I'm not going to read it, but I do want to just highlight a couple of things. High-level, in-house legal services to the city, that's what we provide. We are, again, exactly that, really just in-house legal services for the city council, all city departments, mayor's office as well. And you can kind of see there some of the things that we, that each division is involved in, and we'll touch on that some more. Starting with prosecution, helping the vibrant economy and quality of life. We provide immediate accessibility to members of the public. Now, I've talked about this before, but just to remind you, the way that the Prosecution Division is set up, people are able to come in and talk to a prosecutor at any point in time. And so as soon as they get a ticket, they can come in and talk to a prosecutor. A lot of the people we deal with in city prosecution are unrepresented. A lot of times, they'll get a ticket and they'll want to come in and talk to someone. They're able to do that every day that we're open, 8:00 to 4:30. People are constantly coming in. So again, immediate accessibility, very proud of that. I think that that has worked well for a significant amount of years. Provide prompt, fair, just prosecution in efficient and productive manner. One of the things you might not know is that Prosecution Division also deals with city legislation. You know, they're not always here at the council, but anything that is related to, you know, the municipal code, the criminal prosecution section, they would definitely be involved in. Sometimes there's other areas of the code that involve enforcement or prosecution that they'll weigh in on. So they're involved behind the scenes a lot of times, even if they're not here. Point of privilege, we don't talk about prosecution that much, but I guess this whole presentation is kind of my point of privilege. But anyway, the other, the other day, I'm sorry?
I'm feeling a little judge-like.
Oh, that's right. Well, that's how it feels to me, actually. But I had someone who I sit on a board with call me, email me, and several months ago, and eventually he just showed up at the office, and he said that he, in his email, said he wanted to talk to me about the prosecutor, a specific prosecutor. I didn't really know what it was, but again, he just showed up unannounced, and so I spoke with him and met with him briefly, and he said, "I just want to tell you that the prosecutor was so helpful to one of the employees that I had." It was an immigrant who came, I don't remember what country they came from, but they were working with him, and they were just confused about the process. There was a whole mix-up. Long story short, he was just so impressed by how our office handled the situation. He went through great lengths to speak with me, to tell me that. And that's just not something you hear all the time, especially with prosecution. So thank you for indulging me. Commission on Human Rights, this, we will talk about that later on, but very proud of the Commission on Human Rights. They're doing wonderful things. Yes, thank Councilman Chobe, I know that you served as a commissioner previously. But assistance in recruiting and supporting a more diverse workforce in the city, they do a lot of wonderful things that we'll talk about a little bit later. The Civil Division, which you guys... The Civil Division, which you guys have the pleasure of interacting with on a regular basis, we provide legal services to facilitate all city programs and initiatives. So I just, I want to reiterate the all-city programs and initiatives, really everything that happens in the city at some point comes to the Law Department. It really doesn't matter what it is, at some point it has to come to the Law Department. And while we might not always be in front of you all talking about it or presenting to the council, there are a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are happening that, you know, we're using a lot of resources and time, obviously. Of course, the, we have on there negotiation redevelopment agreements, you see a lot of that in front of the council, and just remind you, there is also a lot of behind-the-scenes with any sort of redevelopment agreements, franchise negotiations that take place, that you don't always have the opportunity to see or know about. This, again, the budget, maintaining existing resources, that is all we are asking the council to do. Maybe if I have the privilege to appear in front of you at the next budget, I might be asking for something else, but maintain existing resources is what we're asking for. You can see our general fund, really we are high, you know, human resources, if I'm drawing a blank on what I wanted to say, personnel, right? But that is the vast majority of what the general fund goes to for us, and you can see law and human rights, different FTEs on that slide. This is our organizational chart, you can see our three different divisions, Civil Division, Prosecution Division, Human Rights. This next slide just breaks it down a little bit more, you can see all of our employees and the layout. Again, we are, as you can see, a lot of our, almost our entire budget is personnel, of Principles that guide decision-making, just wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the value of in-house legal counsel for the city. One of the things you get with in-house legal counsel is you get vested interests, and, you know, what that really means is we are vested in the outcome. If you have outside counsel or someone else coming in temporarily or something like that, they don't, they might not care the same way that we care about the city and the outcome. We have dedicated attorneys who have really been there for a long time, and that, you see that next point, experienced attorneys. That really, what that does is also just helps us, the strong relationships that we have, that really helps us anticipate outcomes, a lot of institutional knowledge helps us be able to explain options, know what we're talking about, and really be helpful to the city. Accessible and responsive, that is, I just, I do want to highlight that briefly, that is something you, of course, get with in-house counsel, available all the time, we should be responsive, should be able to call us at any point in time, any of the departments to be able to have a lawyer answer their questions, help them through whatever it is that they need. Civil attorneys, I do want to, while I do think that everyone understands this, I do want to talk about this a little bit. You know, our civil attorneys do only civil work, our prosecutors do only prosecution, we don't have civil attorneys going to prosecute cases. There are some cities that do that, crossover, we don't do that, and we think that that really helps us be even more efficient and knowledgeable. Also, we have civil attorneys that are assigned to specific departments, and so that also, we think, helps with continuity, and people are dealing with a signed lawyer on a regular basis. Now, there are some departments that deal with lots of lawyers, like L T U, which I think we can understand, they have different divisions, but generally speaking, we have an attorney assigned to each department. This, I think you have seen this slide before, cost-effective legal services, this is just the hourly rate that we have in Lincoln, basic private sector, specialized private sector, and then the in-house rate that we have calculated. I do want to just note that there are things that I would suggest cannot be quantified, such as some of the things I talked about, like accessibility relationships, the vested interests, excuse me, those are things that are really hard to put on a slide, hard to quantify. I will tell you that it's arguably invaluable and arguably impossible to quantify, what is that worth? This, again, is just another slide talking about the attorney hourly law form rates by state. I know that you've seen this slide before, city laws in red, have high state, low state, Nebraska on the end, and then surrounding states, so you can just kind of see that. One thing that is also hard to quantify that I do want to talk about briefly is just the average years of experience that we have in the Law Department, which I really think is very, very valuable to the city. We have average years of experience, as example, prosecution, the average years of experience is 28 years. The average years of experience in the Civil Department is 21 years, that averages out to an average of over 23 and a half years' experience, and that's just not something that you see. To be clear, average years of experience is not years of service with the city, so I have those numbers as well. Years of service with the city is 26 and a half years with prosecution, still very high number. 14 and a half years, Civil Division, that averages to over 18 and a half years just with years of service with the city. And so that is also something that's very hard to quantify the value of that. I will not tell you how long I have been practicing, but I probably bring those numbers down a little bit. I have not been at the city for that long. These are some of our performance measures. I will, let's see, I know that we have the 35% on there, which is the turnaround on the complaints. We are reviewing that and thinking about how we can rethink our goals and measures, because really the goal is to reach a mutually beneficial resolution for both parties. And it's not really about turnaround time, and so we are working through that, but sometimes, you know, the human rights, a commissioner might, or investigator might sit on a case to let everyone cool off, or to help with the negotiation, things like that, also might engage in mediation, which all of that time counts against us. And so, again, we are rethinking that. Of course, we also had the pandemic, which slowed things down as well. I did want to just point that out. Conviction rate, well over our target goal as well, with less than 200. This slide just kind of breaks down a little bit more for you, numbers that the Law Department is doing on a regular basis. That's not everything, that's just kind of a broad overview of some of the statistics for the year 2020. One of the things that, looking at that, one of the things that is not on there would be some prosecution numbers, and I think that we reviewed over 38,000 cases last year, filed over 19,000 last year, 2020, and over 18,000 convictions, 2020. So, and then, the, that is for the Law Department. I do plan to also talk about human rights, so we can have questions now with the Law Department, we can do it at the end.
Are there any questions for the city law portion? Councilman Schob?
I think my question would be better answered in the human rights section, it's about the 75 and the 67 target.
Go. Councilman Washington?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Christie, I have a question about the, where we fall in the hourly rate. So knowing that we try to hit the mid-point of our region, our area, whatever the geographic or comparable cities are, how, it looks like we are not at mid, maybe we are at mid, and, but I'm not sure who we're comparing ourselves to, but just in the surrounding states, it looks like we are very efficient. And are we, you don't often have vacancies, but when you have vacancies, are you finding it a challenge to recruit?
Well, I would say that it is somewhat challenging to recruit, yes, but I think where we're at now, it might, everyone's kind of experiencing that, I think, at this moment with job applications, they're down across the city, and then when we looked into it, we found out they were down across the private sector as well. So in this moment, it's kind of hard to tell what the driving force truly is, but yes, I think that it has been difficult to recruit right now during this time period. All right, moving on to the Commission on Human Rights, just like it was my honor and privilege to talk about the Law Department, it's my honor and privilege to talk about the human rights. I think that the Human Rights Commission, they do amazing, amazing work. Their mission statement, prevent, respond to, and eliminate all forms of illegal discrimination, and to ensure and foster equal opportunity for all City of Lincoln community members. They have a very serious task. I'm not going to read the slide to you, but they are very, very busy. This is, we should have some of our commissioners in there. A lot of times, if there is a complaint within the city about housing discrimination or employment discrimination, Civil Rights, or the Commission on Human Rights will investigate that. It could lead to going in front of the commissioners for them to find whether there is reasonable cause or not reasonable cause. That is just one of the things that they, that they do. A lot of, a lot of the things that they're doing right now as well includes outreach to the community and education, which this next slide, Todd will talk about that a little bit. The Career Ladder Project Collaboration is a very unique project that the Commission on Human Rights is involved in right now. The idea of this project is to help immigrants with professional experience or education from another country beyond the United States, obviously, help connect them in our community. This Career Ladder Project Collaboration actually won Google.org Challenge Grant, you may have heard of that, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors Dollar Wise Grant as well, very innovative program that they're working on. That amount was, I believe, the Google grant was about, was 40,000, I think the U.S. Conference of Mayors was 10,000. The pathway guides, you can kind of see what that is there, but just briefly, it's a step-by-step guidance for skilled immigrants, so when they, when they come into our community, just kind of laying out the process for them. The My City Academy is really a leadership development, which promotes inclusion and belonging. The Connectors Program is really accelerated mentorship, connects skilled immigrants with established professionals in their field. What happens a lot of times is you might have someone who's an engineer or a lawyer in another country, and then when they come here, they have a hard time transitioning into their professional field, and so this has really been instrumental and helpful with that. Tenant Assistance Project, you've heard of this, we, this is a collaboration between multiple community partners, also urban development, which I think you are well aware of. The Tenant Assistance Project, the Commission on Human Rights has been very, very busy with that. I know that they have people at the courthouse on an everyday basis trying to help with eviction prevention, and also trying to help people find immediate access to the city's rental assistance funds. The 90% success rate you see on there is, at the initial eviction hearing, I think they have a 98% success rate, whereas before it was 99%, I think the other way. So the first time people are showing up in court, first hearing, they were getting evicted. Huge, huge turnaround. I think that this model has been, it's gotten a lot of attention, and I understand that I think Omaha might be trying to do a similar program, and there might be some other cities looking into this as well. Very, very proud of the work that they're doing. And just to be, I think everyone probably knows this, but you're not entitled to a lawyer if you're getting evicted, obviously, so if, you know, someone will show up and they don't, they don't have a legal counsel to advocate for them, and they're not familiar with the process, another, one of the other things that they do with this program is sometimes just let the tenant know about the eviction proceeding, because a lot of times they don't know that as well, so even if it's just a phone call to let them know, or sometimes they even go to their house to let them know, so. Youth Mental Health Protection Ordinance Enforcement, this was recently passed by the council, the Lincoln Commission on Human Rights, they are tasked with this responsibility as well. We embrace it, and we welcome this new, awesome responsibility. The Lincoln Commission on Human Rights, one of the other things they do is they put on an annual civil rights conference, and that was your invite to the civil rights conference, and we have Council, do we have Councilman Schob on there? I know that he attends. Yeah. And I think that, you know, it's been with, again, COVID, I think that was probably the only year it was down a little bit, and I think they did kind of a scaled-back mini-virtual conference, but other than that, every year it's been in person, and I think it's been very successful, and you see the date on there for this year, October 21st, 2021 is when it is scheduled. Lastly, I do want to just, I could have probably had this at the beginning, but I do want to show kind of the organizational structure of the Lincoln Commission on Human Rights. You can see that in the red, that is the general fund. There's also, I think we have some, you can hopefully see that, ELC and HUD money as well. The other colors are new, are grant-funded positions. A lot of those would be like the Housing Rights Interns as example, you know, those are probably one-time grants. But I do want you to make sure that you were able to see this, because a lot of the funding for the Commission on Human Rights has come from outside sources, federal grants, and also very proud of that as well. Mindy Rush Chipman, who was the director of the Commission on Human Rights, has done a very nice job, being very innovative and getting the outside funding to help fund her department, so.
Are there any questions for City Attorney Christie, Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie, thank you for coming forward. As you guys might remember, well, first off, I want to say, yes, I am very pleased with the work of the Human Rights Commission, and I'd like to point out that my fellow Councilman, Mr. Beck is also served on the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you.
Two things I want to talk about is the FTEs and then the target goals. Let's start, when I was first looking at the FTEs on page 133, I saw the numbers went down, and then if you move to the second section where there's grant-funded, and your last org chart pointed out the grant funding there, the purple, where you're actually, it appears as though we're actually providing more services to the community that are outside of the general fund. Is that, am I oversimplifying that?
Um, I don't know that you're oversimplifying it, I don't, I should have, maybe have a slide that spells out the specific numbers, and I can get that to you. But yeah, there are a lot of, certainly, a lot of the new positions that is not being funded by the general fund.
I think that we should give credit to you and the Human Rights Commission for seeking those grant funds. When we're talking about limited city dollars, you're actually going out and getting some more outside money that helps us provide more services for our community. I think you need to be congratulated on that, you and Ms. Rush Chipman.
Yes, Ms. Rush.
The other thing I want to talk about is the goals, and I'm sure, I'm hopeful that Councilman Beck is will back me up. A lot of times we see at the Human Rights Commission, your investigators, you said, sitting on cases, but they're actually working them and massaging them to get predetermination settlements, which I always consider a win-win. We actually explain to someone who may have committed an active We actually explain to someone who may have committed an act of discrimination where they made a mistake and give them a chance to improve their actions. That takes a little longer to do, so that actually gets your untimeliness down, but you're making our community better that way. So you said during your presentation, you were thinking about maybe reevaluating how you measure
Correct.
success. I think that will be, I think we really should, because those predeterminations are wins for our community, and it doesn't always translate that way if you look at just timeliness.
That's right. I, I would, I appreciate you saying that, and when I said um, sit on cases, I didn't mean sit on cases just because, I, I, I just want to clarify that. Sitting on cases and, and because they were negotiating, sitting on cases, just not bringing them in front of the, the commission, but trying to work out a, an agreement between the parties.
I think we, I used that phrase too, and I think that's the wrong phrase. I don't know, it's actually giving the case more time to resolve itself.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think those are both commen- actions that should be commended, and I appreciate your reference there, and the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Seaman, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, do we want to take a break now, or do we want to go to our next presentation with Finance and Information Services?
My next slide says let's take a break.
Yep, let's do a ten-minute break, and we'll come back at two fifty.
And we're going to kick off the Finance and Information Services part of the budget. Thank you so much.
Chairman Bowers, members of the council, thank you very much. As my friend Johansson before me said that he was honored and privileged, well, I will be privileged and honored to speak for you today. My name is David Young, 555 South 10th Street, this building, and I'm here representing the Finance Department and our IT folks. Couple people to introduce you to, Sherry Wolf-Durble, you all know, the real brains of the operation, but also her two team members, Jan Bolan and James Van Bergen in the back, the people who put this entire budget together. They did fantastic work. Up front, we have Craig Gifford, who runs our IT department, and we have Jim Anderson, our security manager, very important people as well, here to speak today. So, what is the difference between Law Department's mission statement and the Finance Department's mission statement? About 150 words. So, thank you. But our mission actually is to be consistent, reliable, and timely for providing financial management for the city. It's very specific, right? You don't want a lot of jokes when it comes to money. How do we accomplish that mission? We'll really focus on providing licenses and permits. Many of what you see, SDLs and liquor licenses, run through the city clerk's office, and cybersecurity for all of our systems. And we do that to focus on the health and safety of our community. We maintain a AAA bond rating, we're very proud of that, and we ensure our financial stability citywide because we all know the cost of borrowing is directly reflective on our stability and our bond rating. We also provide e-tools, Citizen Tools and e-payment platform, that's these guys for making sure we can get the money friction, right, without friction. We want it to be easy for people to pay their bills. And finally, we administer the entire complete procurement cycle, Bob Walla, many of you know, so that we can, all the departments can get goods and services, and we try to allocate the public resources very efficiently, meaning we tell people, no, they can't have more money. That's our job. Your job is to provide maximum money. A lot of people don't know this, there are six distinct teams within the Finance Department. We have the accounting team, we have the city treasurer's team, the city clerk, you guys know Sony, he's here every Monday, and we have the Information Services team, we have the budget team led by Sherry, and then Bob Wallace Purchasing Group. In that team, we are proposing to add four FTEs this budget cycle. That proposal was sent to you as the notice of a, what was it, funding allocation?
Fiscal impact.
Fiscal impact statement in March. When we made the presentations, that is, two positions for CGIS and two positions for the HCM project, and we'll go into those here in just a couple of quick slides. Those are the only changes in the finance budget. Specifically, where do the funds come from for finance? General fund accounts for about 18% of it, and then 58% are internal services charges for the IT department. How do we spend that? We're a little lower on the personnel side, about 45% of our expense is on personnel, but 47% is on other charges, so services, software, licensing for all of the city and county runs through that budget. I'm going to deep dive in for a few minutes into each one of those budgets you saw on the previous slide. In the general fund budget, you'll see a slight dip of about $200,000 in revenue, and specifically in the taxes line. That is occupation taxes. Those have been going up and down significantly, and this information starts on page 99, if you're looking in the book. Under our Social Security Fund budget, you'll see that in 2020, it was reduced down significantly. We are depreciating that fund and moving it into general fund. It will take a number of years before that fund finally closes out, and that's due to payments that need to come into that fund. The WEOA Fund budget, $20,000 change, and just the COLA is part of their budget. The Keno Fund budget, we project a slight uptick of about $90,000, but we're also being very cautious on this fund because with the new casino coming in, we're going to be very focused on researching and projecting very closely for what happens with our Keno funds. And finally, Information Services Fund. The four positions we're talking about today will show an $800,000 total expenditure increase. We're paying for those out of our revolving fund, and so they will not be billed until the 2022-2024 cycle, so there will be no fiscal impact on the other departments. Until then, what are the two positions? You'll remember in April, we came forward with a Phase 1 contract to replace our CGIS system. The CGIS system that we have today has been phenomenal over 44 years in operation, written in-house, and we are asking for two positions specifically, one is a program manager and one is a programmer, to learn under our very tenured employees so that we will not lose that institutional knowledge. When those two tenured employees retire, we will not fill those positions. So we're basically just doing a training program. The picture on the right that you see, this is our 911 Operations Center. I cannot let Wayne Mixdorf get up on us at IT. We would love to take you down in the 911 Operations Center and show you where the CGIS heartbeat happens. This is where the information comes in. It's a very important place in our community. The second two positions that we have asked for are to support, same thing, program manager and programmer, to support our human capital management software, Oracle HCM. You will remember vaguely that in 2020, we spent over $1 million in consulting for program management and for programming work. Since we hired our program manager a couple of months ago, we have gone down to less than $10,000 in expenditures. So we have stabilized the system, we are making tweaks, we are learning in-house how to run and operate the system. It will save us a significant amount of money by having these resources in-house. And the customer service that you'll have heard about that was lacking previously during the implementation has now gone up because we have a full-time employee to take phone calls and work on those issues. What are our performance measures in the Finance Department? Specifically, maintain a AAA bond rating, extremely important for us. How do we do that? We accurately forecast general fund revenues within 3.5% of the projection. We beat it in 2019, and we're looking at it again for 2020. And finally, the other piece that goes in there that a lot of people don't understand is the Certified Annual Financial Report and the Public Annual Financial Report Awards. The Certified Annual Financial Report Award has been given to the Finance Department for over 30 years running. So when investors from other states want to buy our bonds, we say we have been certified by a national award for excellence in finance for over 30 years. That is part of the reason why we get such a high bond rating. That and your fiscal management. Thank you. I'm going to ask Sherry Wolf-Durble, our Budget Officer, to come up and present the next couple of slides because there are some miscellaneous fund budgets I think that will be very interesting to you. Sherry?
Thank you, David. All right, we're on the correct slide. So these nine funds that we have in miscellaneous budgets, it is a tab in your budget book, it begins on page 147. They're essentially unrelated funds that don't neatly fall under the operations of any one city department. Some of them are utilized by a number of departments citywide, and then there are a couple others like Community Health Endowment and Pinnacle Bank Arena that are essentially developed outside of the mayor's budget process by their own governing boards, but they are city funds, so we report them in our budgets and other accounting reports. This slide shows you where the $83.7 million that comprises these miscellaneous budgets comes from. 79% of it comes from the general fund, and in addition to the general fund, the revenue for the bond interest and redemption fund, the turnback tax bonds, and the special assessments also come from sales or property tax revenues, so similar funding sources. The revenues that come into that fund, or these funds, are utilized primarily for personnel services. The 37% of the pie that you see here identified as personnel service is primarily the fringe benefits for all of our general fund employees, police, fire, finance. Those fringe benefits are budgeted centrally in general expense. In addition to those personnel costs, the majority of the transfers category, which makes up another 31%, is primarily personnel in city subs, or in general fund subsidized funds like 911 Communications, Startran, Health and Aging. Those special revenue funds generate a lot of their funding through fees, but they still require a general fund subsidy to fully, to be fully funded. And so those transfers, I'm going to say, are roughly 70% personnel, just because most operations are about 70% personnel citywide. So if there are no additional questions about miscellaneous budgets or finance, that concludes our presentation today, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions at this time?
Sure.
Okay. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you very much. Mr. Young, you had mentioned that the positions, the pre- 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 CGIS, so two additions will come off as when their training period is complete, and I'm not rushing anyone's retirement. I don't want to end that training, that training program, but you know how many years those decisions need to come.
Two things, we expect the entire replacement project to take three years, and we have one employee that has given us notice that he will not make it that long before he retires. We do not want to make, rest the project either. This is a critical system, much like HCM for finance touches every employee, CGIS touches every public safety officer in the city, so it's critical that we get that knowledge transfer. So I do not have a good answer for you, but my hope is that they will stay on as long as possible.
We should see this again in our budget next year and maybe the year after.
Correct. But the goal, to be very clear, is at the end of that transition, we will have two new trained employees who will continue to support the system.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Director Young is also going to go over our City Council, excuse me, budget real quick. It starts on slide 138 of our presentation, so thanks for being here.
I appreciate that. Not at all. The depth at which the City Council budget slides will go is, I think there's two. Happy to do it. Specifically, Lincoln City Council, the legislative body for the city, thank you for that work. General fund budget is about 354, the expenditures are 354. So it's exactly the same from one year to the next.
Perfect. All right, and if there's-
Again, you know, being in the mid-year of a biennium, right, these are very short presentations normally, but yeah, that is extremely, that's extremely short. I thought there were two slides.
Perfect. Awesome, thank you so much, David. Next up, we'll have City Communications in the mayor's office provide their budget briefing.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council, Jennifer Brinkman. I'm the Chief of Staff in the mayor's office, but also the Director of the Mayor's Department, and we, like you, have a fairly simple budget. Our mission statement is the same as the mayor laid out for you for the entire budget, which is leading Lincoln to a more successful, secure, and shared future. And you know most of the mayor's office staff who work on our three initiatives that you are quite familiar with, but we also have, and I'll just, I don't know, I guess my other slide came out, but the mayor's department is really the mayor's office staff, and then we also have charge of two very important divisions. One is City Communications, and the other is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which does a lot of critical work with federal dollars to support workforce development in Lincoln. I think it is a hidden gem, and while we, I think, created WIA 20 years ago and have been working on that process for that time, it's something that we probably should highlight a little bit more in terms of the city's commitment to assisting with workforce development. So as the department director, I'm going to turn it over to the people who have a lot more knowledge of the work of most of the divisions, which is where we are proposing some additions for investment, both in City Communications and in workforce, and we will also have Adele Burke, who leads our One Lincoln Initiative, touch a little bit on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Administrator that we propose that will be located in the HR department, but is an initiative through our office. So with that, I will turn it over to Diane Gonzalez, who is the Manager of City Communications.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Welcome, Tom. Feel free, any of you, to ask questions during the presentation. Last year, most of you heard me say that one of the aspects of local government that has really been highlighted during the pandemic is the importance of providing clear and accurate and timely information, and we certainly have, that has been the focus of City Communications all the time, but this year has really been a challenge for us, and I am so proud of how the members of my team have stepped up and really taken on the challenge. We have just over 6.8 FTEs, and one of the factors that has helped us so much over the years is that we have so many of our team members who are good at many different things, so we can be very flexible and adapt to the many changes that have come over the last year. Our team works with all the divisions and departments in city government. You'll see our kind of list of, a basic list of responsibilities there. We do a lot with news conferences and news releases, also website, social media, our government access television operation, and then also we do a lot of work with the departments and divisions on marketing and advertising and printed materials. In terms of our budget, we still have three funds. We used to have four, so we are simplifying, but the general fund is the main part of our budget. The cable fund is money we receive from a portion of the franchise fees, and this goes to operate our government access channels. Over the past year, that fund has paid for some of the behind-the-scenes upgrades, but also for some more visible things like the closed captioning that we now offer on our channels, some new remote cameras. Our video manager, Jamie Wenz, is here. I think he's here all the time. He's here to answer any questions you might have about the use of the cable funds. Then we do still have a separate fund for our health channel, which will soon enter its 11th year of programming. That channel was created through a grant from the Community Health Endowment, and it continues to receive a lot of outside, non-city support, so we continue to keep that fund separate, at least for the next year. All right, here's the confusing part. This is the PEG channels. You may have heard the PEG channels refer to its Public Education and Government. Spectrum manages the one or two public access channels that we currently have. LNK TV Education is the one educational access channel. That has been very helpful this past year. At the beginning of the pandemic, LPS actually used the channel 4K through 5 remote learning. KLKN also ran the channel on one of its over-the-air digital channels during the past year. The part that we deal with here in City Communications is the two government access channels. That's LNK TV City, which is what folks are watching right now, and then, as I mentioned, LNK TV Health, which remains the only government access health channel in the nation. We're very proud of that. Melissa Fuller has managed the channel since it was created, and her expertise, her connections in the community have really been extremely valuable as we've gone through the last year. We do not really have a good way to measure our viewership. We aren't part of the Nielsen ratings that are happening, but we do keep track of our social media numbers. The numbers you're looking at right now are YouTube views for all of our programs, but keep in mind that much of our programming over the last year, besides the regularly scheduled meetings, was on COVID-19. What these numbers also do not reflect is that many of the media in our community, especially at the beginning of the pandemic and when we were in red on the dial, they also carried our video live on their channels and on their stations. So the audience for our programming this year was much, much higher than what's reflected in our YouTube numbers. That just kind of gives you a little snapshot of where we are with that. Over the past, well, since the beginning of the pandemic, we have done 123 media briefings. Actually, the 123rd was this morning, when we announced that we're allowing the DHM to lapse. I think that all the members of my team, as well as a lot of people in the Health Department, and a lot of people in the mayor's office, were involved in getting these briefings put together. This afternoon, we, City Communications and Health will issue our 600th press release on COVID-19. That's just the number of press releases on COVID-19. So you know, the work of the city has not stopped during that time, so John Taylor has helped to not just get these out on a more-than-daily basis, but also getting releases out on street construction and all the other things people, the public needed to know as our pandemic went on, in terms of other important things. You want to know about that street closure, that is going to affect your commute to work. All right, we've got some website numbers here. Justin Komitzer was phenomenal this year. He created a whole COVID-19 website from scratch. This was our main source of information for getting information to the public during the pandemic. So 1.8 million people viewed the website, and note that that does not include those people who looked at the dashboard or who registered for vaccinations. So the website was kept updated all the time, it was very easy to navigate, so Justin deserves a lot of kudos for the long hours he put in. I do want to mention the other members of my team that I haven't mentioned yet. Bo Wolf has been instrumental in all of our video productions, and our newest team member is Mairead Saffronik, who is doing social media for us, and she too has jumped right in and become an important member of our team. Looking to our proposed investments for this year, we plan to add to our video team, finally bringing our health channel coordinator to full-time. Our video sources were really stretched this year. We often had, in the past, have hired contractors on a part-time basis to help us. Many of them weren't available, and then we had increased need for programming at the same time, so we were pretty stretched this year, and so the additional point-two FTE, which is eight hours a week, is going to be extremely valuable for that. The biggest investment is to add an internal communications position, which will really benefit all of city government. The city does not have an employee, one employee right now, who focuses on internal communication. We have some who do it as part of their jobs, it's not been a coordinated and dedicated effort. You'll see some of the benefits of strong internal communications. I also looked up some studies on the benefits of internal communication. 85% of employees most, or more motivated when they get regular updates. More informed employees outperform their peers by 77%. Productivity, productivity up 20% to 25% when employees feel connected. Businesses with effective communications are 50% more likely to have employee turnover, and 80% of an organization's opportunities for improvement come from frontline employees. I think you've seen that in your time on the council. So with that, do you want me to take any questions now, Jennifer, or when everyone's done? Where'd she go? Okay, there she is.
She's in your blind spot.
I'll take any questions on City Communications right now, since I'm already up here.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any questions for, yes, Councilwoman Washington?
This is not a question, but this is a round of applause and appreciation for all of the work. Your communication team has done phenomenal work this year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for keeping all informed.
Don't make me cry, Sandra.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Any other questions from Ms. Gonzalez? Comments? No, I would just add kudos to that, Diane. I know Jamie was there 24/7, as was everyone, and no one could have driven him more crazy than the City Council, I don't think so. Thank you, everyone. Yes, Councilwoman Chubb?
I thank you, Madam Chair. I'm currently watching the YouTube channel, and while I've been watching, the viewership went up 50% when you came to the microphone.
Oh, it did not.
It did.
It's her staff.
I'm not sure I believe you, but-
The numbers are a little low, but it went up 50%.
Thank you.
I, and I like having that available. I post it regularly on my Facebook, I get lots of comments from people. The fact that it's archived, they can go back and watch it on demand when they want to. I think that's a real boon to our community, and it shows transparency, it shows information, it's really great that you're there. And I was doing, looking at the math on the number of press releases that you guys do, and I refer, I look at those a lot. People ask me questions, and the first thing I do is go look for a press release. Did you already tell me about this before? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do want to mention Jamie as well, because Jamie's biggest fault is that he's not, I'm not sure he knows how to say no, even if it's something at the last minute or something that's technically difficult, so.
Yes.
Jamie, Bo, and Melissa have been phenomenal, has my whole team.
Grow big, wear glasses if you need them.
Any other questions for Ms. Gonzalez?
If you have questions later, just send me an email.
We will. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next up, it looks like Ms. Burke. Thank you, Adele.
Hello there. Adele Burke, mayor's aide on the One Lincoln Initiative, and many other hats, but I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the One Lincoln Initiative and an investment that we have in the budget to support that initiative this year. And as Jennifer mentioned, it lives within the Human Resources Department, but because it serves the entire organization, and it's so closely linked to the mayor's priority for One Lincoln, I wanted to expound on it a little bit in our presentation. So to remind you, the vision of One Lincoln is to ensure an equitable, inclusive community where every resident has the equal opportunity to reach their full human potential, which is pretty lofty, but in terms of City Hall, what it means is that everyone who works here reflects and understands the needs of the diverse communities that we serve. And so one of the things that you'll see on this slide is the importance of that vision in terms of the changing demographics of our community. So what you'll see here is statistics from 1990 through 2050, projected population in Lancaster County. So the red section shows our non-Hispanic and white population growing fairly steadily, our non-white population and Hispanic population growing much more rapidly, and then the total population in gray. And so this is just a great illustration of why it becomes increasingly important to think about racial equity in the work that we do, and in who we hire, and how our hiring processes work. So in order to remain an effective employer, we really need to attract and retain city staff who reflect the community that we serve. And it's true, not just for our organization, but for businesses throughout our community and through the country, you've seen a lot more organizations that have positions that are related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there's a really great reason for that, which is particularly in the business world, it helps with effectiveness of businesses, and it helps with effectiveness of organizations like the city as well. A 2015 study by McKinsey found, looking at 400 companies, that companies with the highest percentage of racial and ethnic diversity were 35% more likely to have above-average financial returns for their industry. And of course, while we're not in the money-making business, we're in the government business, it's still incredibly important for us to focus on retaining and attracting the best employees that we can. In this study, more diverse companies were in the better position to recruit and retain talented employees, they better understood the needs of their consumers, or in this case, our residents, greater employee satisfaction, and greater creativity and innovation in the work that they did. So I don't mean to beat a dead horse here in terms of the importance of DEI, and it is incredibly important, but I think that it's important to show you why this is so So the other reason why this is so important is in order to meet our need for equal employment, satisfying regulations and requirements, we really need to have someone on the city team who is dedicating 100% of their time to that responsibility. And we have 20 to 100 FTEs, but we don't have someone who's dedicated exclusively to that position, so it's really important to have. And it's also important because we have such a diverse community in so many different ways, that we have employees that have the- ways, that we have employees that have the tools and training to be able to provide services to meet their unique needs and priorities and interests. So to that end, our proposed budget includes a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Administrator in the Human Resources Department. Their roles would include advising on equal employment and workforce equity, diversity, and inclusion more generally, and that would involve compliance with just the basics of E E O and other related laws at the local, state, and federal level. They would facilitate and work with their proposed training team in the Human Resources Department on E E O-related training and guidance for city departments, and training on issues of implicit bias, cultural competency, and workplace inclusion more generally. They would work also on increasing and ensuring the diversity of the city workforce as a whole, so in terms of hiring, promotion, and retention of all people within the protected classes, making sure that our city reflects the diversity of our community. And they would work to implement equitable workplace policies for the employees who are here, to make sure that we're retaining those employees. So with that, those are my two slides, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about this budget item.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Any questions for Ms. Burke? Very good, we appreciate your being here. Thank you. And we have...
Oh, and I see Kate here for Economic Development.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Happy to talk about economic recovery and renewal here in Lincoln. I want to start with two quick charts here that are just a status update on how we're doing as we turn the corner to economic recovery. And what you can see in these two slides is that first, small businesses are on the rebound in terms of revenue, but they are not recovered. While the trend is going in the right direction, they are still below where they have been in the past, and we need to continue to support their efforts to not just recover, but revitalize. And the second chart here illustrates what I think is a very clear disparity for workers. We know that people struggled with employment throughout the pandemic. What we see here is a disparity between high-wage workers, moderate-wage workers, and low-income workers, and those low-income workers are still looking for new open doors and new opportunities. So I think the city has a role to play in that. We do that in two major ways. The first is for businesses, we partner with the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development, which of course you know is a public-private partnership, both the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce and of course, all of us here at the city promoting business recruitment, retention, workforce development, and creating an entrepreneurship ecosystem. On the workforce side, as Jennifer mentioned, we house the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. The mayor is our public official of record, which is a unique commitment across the country of an elected official having this staff in the mayor's office, which I think is a wonderful reflection of our city's value of workforce development and of workers. There were several highlights to talk about in the last year in spite of the coronavirus. The mayor's Economic Recovery Task Force has resulted in several recommendations that were implemented. For example, our micropurchasing policy that was passed in partnership with all of you at the City Council, which is supporting our local businesses. Related, we developed a local business directory, we provided some child care assistance, and we continue to think strategically about how we implement those recommendations. We'll be talking with you more about some of those forthcoming recommendations. Another example that we should all be proud of as city supporters of the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development is the April Drive-Thru Career Fair. It was an innovation that happened during the pandemic, and again, the spring served 330 carloads and 78 employers. Our Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act program continues to strengthen over time. One of the innovations that we've implemented this summer is the Mayor's Youth Employment Program. We thought it was important to walk our talk in terms of talking about supporting workforce, giving people new opportunities, and training leaders for the future. So we have eight young people funded by the We Owe program working in city agencies, and I look forward to welcoming a couple of you and to talk to our youth in a couple of weeks, so thank you for that. Another innovation that I wanted to mention is that we use the coronavirus pandemic as an opportunity to freshen up some of our work on our website that will be rolling out soon, but it will have some innovations that allow people to engage with our services more virtually, which people are getting more and more comfortable with. All of that leads to the two pieces in this budget that are additions from an economic recovery and renewal perspective, one for businesses and one for workers. When I talk about the business services representative that is incorporated into our budget, I want to give you just a small illustration. So I toured a local healthcare manufacturing company a couple of weeks ago. That company would like to expand their footprint here, but it is more than expanding their physical footprint. They have to illustrate both workforce availability and the quality and training of that workforce. What we learned in that tour was that it's not just about more warm bodies. It's about first, recruiting and training a higher level of worker that can provide the quality assurance, and making sure that that business has both the educational connections and the financial resources to train that level. And then it is bringing in those lower-level workers that report to that quality assurance person, who can do the day-to-day work, who have both the soft skills and the hard skills in terms of math or technical abilities. And we need to help them recruit both. You don't just walk in a door of a job training agency and say, "What I would like to do for a living is make Theraflu." You have to understand what opportunities are available and how to leverage your gifts, and both of those layers of opportunities need to be explored and those doors open to make things really happen for people. That's the sort of thing that a business services representative could help us do through the city of Lincoln. We're helping businesses leverage the resources available, draw in people, find the right fit. The other request that we have in the budget is to develop a Ticket to Work program. Ticket to Work is a federally-funded case management service for people who have employment challenges related to social security disability. If you are someone who receives social security disability, you're not likely to be someone who's developmentally disabled. Rather, you're, you're someone who has a work history and maybe had a brain injury or had a bout of depression and were determined to be disabled. That may mean that you can no longer work in your previous job, but it does not mean that you cannot work in a future job and even develop a strong quality of life for yourself. A Ticket to Work specialist will work directly with those individuals and help them move from reliance on social security disability into competitive employment that will not only move them off that assistance, but also improve their quality of life. Why did we choose this initiative? Well, it, it connects back to our comprehensive plan. As we were looking at the renewal of our comprehensive plan, we found that the American Community Survey identifies our disparities in disability employment as a soft spot for our community. We have significantly more people with disabilities seeking work, people who are unemployed and wish they were working than other communities of our size, so this is a, an opportunity for us to address that disparity in that specific population. I don't have a Lincoln Lancaster County-specific number of the demand, but I can tell you that statewide, 60,000 people are on social security disability and not being currently served by the Ticket to Work program. So plenty of, for lack of better terms, market share there to serve those folks. If we provide these local dollars for, we're expecting a year to 18 months, this specialist will be able to build up his or her caseload and become fully federally sustaining. So I have talked enough. I will leave it there and see if you have any questions for me. I really appreciate your support of business and workforce development in the city of Lincoln.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bowles. Questions from the council? Anyone? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Kate, thank you for coming down today. I have one question, and maybe this is, if you can't answer this, I'm sure someone else can, but what is the excluded office specialist?
Excluded? Can you tell me where you're...
It's, so it's underneath the Ticket to Work. There were significant changes to the mayor's budget, and one was a delay in hiring an excluded office specialist, and I thought, I can twist that around a couple of different ways, but I don't know what excluded means.
Jennifer may be able to answer that more quickly, but I think it was an administrative position that we determined was not necessary to fill by, Jennifer.
Excluded is just a way of categorizing those, those workers, especially those that work in the mayor's office. So they are not represented by a union.
Oh, thank you.
But they are classified.
Okay. I was thinking the job title was excluded, and I thought, man, that is a weird job title. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that is actually, I mean, obviously, if you have any more questions for Kate about workforce, but if you have any more for us with regard to our budget, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions for the mayor's office?
This time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all very much. So we, in the future, that's right. So we are a bit... Okay. There he is. All right. He's in the house. Thank you. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Thank you for coming early, Director Johnson. Take your time.
Absolutely happy to be here. Can I kill a minute?
Yeah. I'd probably get you, get something to...
I'm feeling more for a minute.
Mm-hmm. When you're running up the stairs, it's like...
Okay, we're going to take just a five-minute break, and we'll let Director Johnson, yes, settle in and take a breath, and we'll reconvene at 3:35.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming early. Thank you very much for coming early.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Oh, can we, we have to get on, oh, there we are. Thank you, Director Johnson.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This obviously is the presentation of the Parks and Recreation portion of the mayor's recommended budget. Kind of a quick, quick review of the department's mission statement with the fund department. We say Parks and Recreation is, is fundamental to youth development, to active healthy living, to quality of life, to management of both green or designed and natural green spaces, special places and events, and obviously economic development. Really, for us, the theme of this budget is restoration and renewal of fundamental services, some after COVID and some after a much longer time than that. The way this presentation is set up is that on the left-hand screen is the level of service that we were providing last year during the pandemic. And then on the right hand of the side, pardon me, the right hand of the screen is looking forward to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget and the level of service that we are planning to provide. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that left screen. I am going to spend some time on the right-hand portion of the screen. And this is one that I'm going to pause a bit on because this is an area where there is a significant change in the budget. And it's really that, that second item about park mowing being returned to seven days for active use areas and neighborhood parks and ten, ten-day cycle for active use areas in community and regional parks. Little bit of history, about twenty-five years ago, the department mowed park areas, essentially all park areas, property line to property line on a, on a seven-day basis. And what has happened, or what happened incrementally over about three kind of budget challenge periods, budget reduction periods, is that we got to the point that we are mowing active use areas in parks on a fourteen-day cycle. And, and the other thing that we've done is that we have prioritized our mowing so that there are what we call lawn grass areas in parks, passive areas in parks, that are, that are mowed about monthly, about three times a season. One of the things that we know from the community surveys is that park mowing has been a concern really every time I think that we've done that survey, the frequency of park mowing has been a concern. There are certainly, I think, people out there who value particularly the prairie that we have established a number of Lincoln's parks and that also value some of the lawn grass areas, but there are also people particularly that have a concern about particularly this time of year normally, how long the park, how long the grass will get in parks. So what we, what is proposed in the mayor's budget is moving back to that seven-day mowing cycle for active use areas in neighborhood parks and then a ten-day mowing cycle for the larger parks, the community and regional parks. The way that we are doing that, and this is a couple of slides later, is that today Parks and Recreation is responsible for managing the mowing of about sixty-five acres of medians and boulevards within the public right-of-way. You'll see just a little bit later that, that the proposal is to shift the responsibility for maintaining those areas to Lincoln Transportation Utilities so that all of those areas, with the exception of the airport entryway, those prairie plantings would be under one management group, one management type, which actually I think is a positive thing. And then we would focus on kind of that mission-centric element of, of mowing parkland. So essentially what we're doing is that we are shifting the resources that we've used to mow or maintain those sixty-five acres of medians and boulevards to back to parks or over to parks. And that gets us a portion of the way to getting to that seven-day mowing cycle or that ten-day mowing cycle. And then there's an increase in the budget of about, I think, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars that is for labor and equipment, but also some added, some added contractual mowing that brings the dial the rest of the way to getting to that mowing frequency. This next slide, and I know the city council has seen this before, is the distribution of, of parks operations staff time. And you'll see that, that a majority of their time, twenty percent of their time, is involved in what we call janitorial cleaning. And that's really maintaining restrooms, picking up park areas, making sure that park shelters are in good condition for rental. So we are, what we are proposing to do with this budget is add increased funding for park mowing and so that we can actually increase the percentage of staff time that will be involved in mowing activities. And then this is the slide about that transfer of the mowing responsibilities for medians and boulevards within the public right-of-way to Lincoln Transportation Utilities. And you may know this, Lincoln Transportation Utilities shifted to a model where they are now having the, the medians and boulevards that they've been responsible for to contractual mowing. And so they would add these areas to contractual mowing and they would be on the same frequency and the same cycle and really under that same contractual model. I think the thing to point out, and I'm sure that Liz will talk about that when, when she presents on her budget, is this obviously is creating a little bit of an impact on, on the street maintenance budget because it's some added expense for L T U really taking over the responsibility for, for mowing of, of these areas that previously parks have been responsible for. And I'm going to pause there because this is, is a little bit, I think, challenging because this is where park mowing intersects with, with this median boulevard change and see if there's any questions there before, before moving on.
Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Director Johnson. Just one question. I know you said that all of the medians and boulevards would be mowed under the same standards that L T U has right now, but will residents see a difference in the mowing standard of medians and boulevards under L T U than they have right now under Parks and Rec?
I think they will see a difference. Our mowing cycle for medians and boulevards has been a fourteen-day cycle, so we have mowed medians and boulevards essentially on the same frequency that we mow parks. And L T U's standard, the standard that they have adopted is a seven-day cycle. So I do think that the community will see a higher level of service. I would also say that when we've done the community surveys in the past, we've asked about level of satisfaction with maintenance of medians and boulevards. It's the area that the community has had the lowest level of satisfaction with. So hopefully this does two things. It helps satisfaction with park maintenance, but hopefully it also helps satisfaction with medians and boulevards as well.
Thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
Maybe you don't know, but if L T U takes this over and we need to increase their maintenance budget, is that correct? Would that be, be using street funds?
That's my understanding and Liz, I think, can, can talk to that. So this is going to have an impact on the funding that is available then for street rehab.
Or streets, so we'll be taking money out of the street funds.
That's my understanding, yes. Liz can speak directly to that, but that's my understanding.
Councilman, Councilman Shob?
You see how he did this? No look pass. Mine was easy. You mentioned community parks versus regional parks. Is there, are those listed on the website? How will I know the difference between a community park and a regional park? They're on slightly different schedules.
They, they are. Neighborhood parks are kind of those smaller parks that are within neighborhoods that don't have parking. The, the community parks, Mahoney Park, Densmore Park, they're the larger parks that typically have ballfields, they have off-street parking. And really the regional parks are the largest parks in the system, so there are Pioneer's Parks, Holmes Park, and Low Park. And community and regional parks, the active use areas in those parks would have the same mowing frequency, it'd be ten-day cycle rather than the seven-day. But there's a lot of acres in those parks and the, the financial impact was fairly significant to try to get to a seven-day cycle in those larger parks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Beckus?
Director Johnson, am I correct in understanding that you don't anticipate with this budget a change in the, or an increase in the mowing of the passive park area?
That's correct, yeah. So the areas that are, that we call lawn grass, the passive areas, would still be that same frequency. We continue to adjust the boundaries of those where they are suitable, where we also continue to transition those to prairie plantings.
Okay. So, so we may see a, a small shifts here and there of passive versus active areas in, in neighborhood parks and, and other park area?
Yeah. We may very well. Like I say, we continue to refine those mowing lines and, and sometimes it has to do with how well the grass does because of the shade. And sometimes it has to do, we get, we get neighborhood concerns sometimes about, why can't you just push that mowing over just a little bit and make it look so much better? So.
Thank you.
Any further questions at this time? Seeing none?
Thank you. Greenways and conservation areas, really there is no major change within this. Probably the, the significant thing that is happening here is that we worked with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the community and we've developed what we've called the User Experience Master Plan. And it really focuses on improvements to trailheads, to replacing and upgrading bridges, to, to increasing the quality of the signage within the park. And we're going to be continuing to implement those improvements in the park. And I also should note that we really have a new partner in terms of land conservation. The Lincoln Parks Foundation has created a new affiliated land conservancy organization. It's called the Soladago Conservancy. And so we have a new partner who will be helping us in land conservation activities. Community forestry, really no major changes here either. The level of staffing remains the same, the level of service essentially remains the same. We, you have probably been contacted by residents who have had concerns about the length of time that they're having to wait for routine tree trimming and routine tree removal. A lot of that really has to do with the fact that we had, as you know, six back-to-back storms last summer with significant tree damage. And the staff spent really six months, that's all they did, was respond to tree damage. So we've got a significant backlog. The cause for service was up significantly last year. Hopefully it will go down a bit this year. You can see the goals there related to the Emerald Ash Bore Response and Recovery Program. That is ongoing work that will continue to be, to be a priority. And we continue to have conversations and we would like to get to a proactive street tree pruning cycle over time as opposed to kind of the reactive approach that we have today. But there is no change in terms of the level of staffing or the level of service that's being offered by our community forestry program. Recreation, really the story here is that we are moving back, we're restoring levels of service here. Essentially, all of our before and after-school programs and our summer day camp programs are licensed childcare programs. And so the level of service that we offered last year and the size of the groups is really dictated by the D H Ms that were in place because of the pandemic. So we, this budget anticipates that we'll be returning to having about four-hundred-and-twenty children participate each day in before and after-school and summer day camps and that our adaptive recreation programs, our club programs is what we call them, those primarily moved to Zoom because a lot of those people were of compromised health. And we'll be moving back to in-person programming with the people in those programs, about five-hundred-and-seventy-five participants, ages eight to about eighty in the adaptive recreation clubs. And then we've got, we, we think we will have twenty-six participants in the adult day recreation service programs at Easter Day Recreation Center. And by next year, the new Air Park Recreation Center will be under construction. I want to thank the council for your approval of that bond financing for that project. The aquatics programs, as the city council probably remembers, we only operated five pools last summer. It was a very modified schedule with, with reduced capacity. This summer, we are back to operating all nine pools. We envision that again next summer. We kind of benchmark, or we target about two-hundred-and-one-thousand pool attendances during the year. I would guess this week, we're probably approaching that all in one week, I don't know. Swim and dive lessons, our swim lessons, dive and, or swim and dive league programs will have resumed at this point. And one of the things from a capital improvement standpoint that we're focusing on is replacing pool slides. The pool slides at this point, they were all replaced, or they were all installed in about the mid-nineties and so they're, they're aging out at this point. We're kind of phasing through replacing pool slides at pools. The team sports programs, again, reserving, resuming services here and, and we're at this point doing this. Kind of the benchmark, we think that we'll have about fifteen-hundred youth players in flag football, volleyball, basketball, track and field programs. And then adults will have about five-hundred-and-seventy teams involved in softball, volleyball, basketball, and indoor kickball. And this is an area of our budget where this is really a hundred percent cost recovery. So we, we set the fees for these so that we're, we're covering the costs associated with, with offering these programs. The nature center, again, this is resuming services out there. So the outdoor education programs are resuming at this point. We're anticipating we'll have about eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred participants. The nature preschool program is also resuming and we're anticipating we'll have about thirty-five participants on a weekly basis. And the nature day camp, which is operating this summer again, will, will have about, at least about forty participants next summer. Not going to read all of this. These are, right now we've got, J.J. Yost, our, our planning and facilities manager, happens to be here today. J.J. calculated that we've got about eleven-point-seven million dollars worth of projects in motion at this point. And so obviously we think that certainly benefits economic development in the community. You can see on the left-hand screen of projects that are recent, either recently completed or are in process at this point. And then as we look to next fiscal year, as we mentioned, the Air Park Recreation, Senator Williams Branch Library will be under construction. We just got a large grant for renovation of Irvingdale and Rudge Parks. We'll be doing that work beginning probably late this summer or this fall. We are beginning design development and then we need to move into a fundraising phase for South Haymarket Park, continuing phase work in Cooper Park, Phase Three renovation, kind of the front of the house improvements at Pinewood Bowl. We replace playgrounds on about a twenty-five-year cycle, so we'll be doing about three of those next year. And then we've got two neighborhood parks, new neighborhood parks that are, that we're working on right now. We'll have, we think we'll have one under construction next summer, or by next year. Kind of the numbers here, last year we had a zero percent increase in our budget. This year, we have about a six percent increase in the budget and I can talk a little bit about why that is. About twenty, a little over twenty percent of our budget, we recover through fees, fee-based programs. Staffing is very nearly the same. We have about, we have, the, moving to the, the increased frequency of mowing parks is adding two F T Es to parks. We've actually had a couple of retirements and we have, we've had some other adjustments of F T Es. A large portion of our budget is unclassified staff. And so we, we've kind of recalculated that, but we have about a one-and-a-half reduction in F T Es for the upcoming budget. This is how the funding breaks out by division about, it really breaks out almost a third, a third, and a third. About a third of it is recreation, about a third of it is parks, and then the other third is community forestry administration and planning and facilities. The expenditure distribution, because we're an operations department, we have, we have a large portion of the budget, almost thirty percent is in that other services and charges. And that's things like utilities, lots of water, obviously we're a good customer of Lincoln Water System. The rental of equipment and then also our data processing expenses are in that category. And about two-thirds of our budget is personnel. We do incremental fee increases every budget. Essentially what we're trying to do is keep pace with inflation and make sure that we're within the market in terms of what we're charging for services. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, every two years we meet with them and we identify cost recovery goals for various types of programming. And we try to make sure that we're, we're within those cost recovery goals as we are establishing fees. And you can see, we're anticipating generating about another sixty-two thousand dollars in revenue next year because of kind of routine fee increases. And on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see what the, what those fee increases are proposed to be. Significant budget changes that are for the operating budget portion of the department is, as we talked about, restoring mowing frequency. That's that about two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. There's that, that contractual shift of the L T U maintenance of medians and boulevards and that's really the contractual funding. We are, city council, I think, is well aware that there was a period of time about ten years ago, I think, where the funding for equipment replacement was reduced due to budget challenges. And what this does is this, the intent is to restore that on an incremental basis. So this restores about twenty-five percent of the funding that Parks and Recreation needs to keep our equipment in good operating condition, current and in good operating condition. And then as the council knows, last year, we were, we were required to essentially hold one percent of our personnel budget. And that was about a hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars and that's been restored for this budget. So those are the big changes within the operating budget. And that yellow highlighting, there's a couple of things in this presentation that I didn't catch until too late. That yellow highlighting should not be there. I thought I'd talk just a little bit about the capital improvement program. You probably know that every two years we do an update to what we call our ten-year facilities plan. So we're looking at, at what we think will need to be repaired or replaced or new facilities developed within the next ten-year period. And that becomes the basis for our capital improvement program. What we've identified, what was identified when we updated the ten-year facilities plan two years ago was that we need about three million dollars annually to keep this, the system in good repair and, and in good condition. And you can see the funding sources that are, that are in our capital improvement program. About a million-five, a little more than a million-five of Keno funds are directed to the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Program. Cell tower revenue is about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. And then that blue category is what we called the gap previously. And it varies from year to year in kind of the availability of general revenue funding, but a lot of times general revenue funding has been what's filled that gap. For the current budget, we have about two-point-eight million dollars appropriated. This, I would say, is as close as I can ever remember of having that gap covered by general revenue. So the unfunded portion of our, our, our need, our facility, or our, our capital improvement need is less than two-hundred-thousand dollars. So I'm incredibly thankful for that. And I, that, that is just good for the community, that we're able to keep our facilities in good operating condition. You can see the list of the major projects down there and I've already talked about those. Within the capital improvement budget, there's about three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars that is identified for contractual removal of public ash trees. We pay for the replacement trees out of that funding. We pay for the replacement trees out of that funding. And we also pay for the treatment chemicals out of the funding that's in the capital improvement program as well. And then I'm going to shift to the, the Lincoln City Golf budget. And the Lincoln City Golf budget is operated as essentially an enterprise fund. So the revenue that, by city ordinance, the revenue that's generated in the golf fund stays with the golf fund and those are the funds that we use to operate the golf program. Minor tweak in the, the, the operations funding, it's essentially the same. And then I'll talk about it in a second. There's an increase of one staff person, a Labor One position in the golf operating budget. This is the expenditure by course. Highlands is the largest course that we manage. The reason that Holmes' expense is as high as it is is because there, the expenses and the revenue from the clubhouse are part of that operating expense. And at the other courses, we have contracts with the golf professionals. And really, so they handle the expenses associated with operating the clubhouses at the other locations. Golf program, COVID was a positive impact on Lincoln City Golf. I think municipal golf programs across the country. Last year we played about 180,000 rounds of golf on the courses. This year we're on course to actually play more than that on the courses this year. So we have actually increased the projected number of rounds. We had previously budgeted at 163,000 rounds. We're moving that up. We think it's conservative, but we've moved it up to 167,000 rounds. And we are projecting some additional revenue because of that, that I'll talk about here in just a second. Every year, we didn't do one last year because of COVID, but normally we do a participant satisfaction survey. And the golf program gets about an 83% user satisfaction survey, so ranks fairly high. Talked about this for several years. I think the greatest challenge that the golf program has really is our aging irrigation systems. And again, I want to thank the city council for approving the bond financing that is allowing us to move forward with the replacement of the irrigation system at Pinehurst Golf. So the oldest irrigation system in the system is about to be replaced this fall. These numbers, I apologize, these numbers, I did not get these truth and they need to, need to be updated. The, let me get back to the right page. The, the amount of, of revenue that comes into the golf CIP, we do the same thing with, with the golf capital improvement program. We put together a 10-year facilities plan for that program as well. Because of the increased play, we're actually seeing some increase in the two CIP surcharges. It's actually about a total of $25,000 between those two surcharges. And the annualized need that we've identified is about $471,000. That available funding, if you add the math correctly that I just told you about, the funding available is about $350,000, which I would tell you in municipal golf programs, that is significant. There's an awful lot of municipal golf programs who do not have the level of funding that, that we've been able to establish for our capital improvement program, for the golf program. The gap is actually now about $121,000 here. And significant changes within the budget. You may know that we've had a very productive partnership with UNL Turf Grass Program and they provided interns who have provided the maintenance for the Agar Golf Course. And there's a change in staffing and it's resulting in a pause of that program. And so for at least a few years, we are not going to be able to have those interns at Agar Golf Course. And so we've got to obviously maintain that course. And so we're proposing the addition of a Labor One position who'll be responsible for maintaining that course. I mentioned that increase in the, the, the projected number of rounds. And we're projecting an increase in revenue of about $156,000. And that's really because of, of increased greens fees, increased cart rental, increased use of the driving ranges, and then also increased sales in the clubhouses. So it's a combination of those factors coming together. And the other thing that's very positive, in 2013, the golf program had, had a deficit of $800,000. The golf program owed the general fund $800,000. We've worked through some strategic planning and made a lot of changes. And we think by the end of 2021 that we'll have about a $900,000 capital reserve or operating reserve funded. So the golf program will again have an operating reserve. So if we get in a situation where we have a challenging summer, if we had significant damage at one of the courses because of a storm, we've got a reserve that we can, that we can rely on again. So that, some of that obviously is because of, of COVID and the added play last year. But some of it's, we've been working incrementally towards this. And so what's important to know about this budget, essentially as I said, the levels of service for recreation programs are removing, that the Emerald, the Emerald Ashboro Response and Recovery Program is ongoing. I mentioned that park mowing frequencies are being restored. We've got the usual incremental fee increases included. And there should have been a note on here about that we have, we are, 25% of our, our facility, or our equipment replayer budget is being funded. So we're incrementally working towards getting that, that funding restored. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson? Seeing none? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And that will conclude our budget hearing. Deputy Chief Staff John Carlson, if you have anything to add, otherwise we'll go ahead and close out.
The only thing we had on here was the city council, so it went on before, so just...
Yep, David already got that taken care of.
Just a, just a reminder to, to folks that we'll have the third budget hearing session next Tuesday on, starting at 12:30 PM. And then just again inviting council, we've taken some good notes. We'll get you the information that we took on that. But please continue to finish your emails and your questions and your information requests and we'll get you what you need.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Morgen?
Thank you.